It is four o'clock. And we will call this workshop for the Kerrville City Council, the first one of the new year to order. And at this time, we will move to number two, Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Action: Community Improvement Project Status Update.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. That is not the slideshow for this one? This is, what was I going to say? Thanks, Martin, but just going to brief you on a few projects that we've got. A lot of them kind of went a little bit stagnant through the holidays, but we did make some progress. The first one is one that we've been talking about for some time is Westminster. We are actually having the pre-construction meeting this Thursday, so I don't have a definitive schedule for you when they're going to start or anything just yet. We're finalizing that contract and getting that schedule laid out. Like we've talked about, we're shooting for the October-November timeframe to be complete. Nothing, like I said, definitive just of yet. On a contrary note, instead of beginning, we're going to talk about ending. So the Lower Lowell Street drainage, that was the 2019 bonds. If you have not driven by there, the contractor, Mr. Fonseca, did a wonderful job. That has actually seen a little bit of rain, not much, but even on the small rains that we've received, is a significant improvement. That was the first phase, if you will. The second phase is going to be the Tex-27 crossing that's waiting for us to move the sewer line associated with the NAP project. And then they will commence once we've got our utilities out of the way and other utilities. So that's looking about September-October timeframe for them to let that project. So hopefully, you know, we'll see how this spring and summer months that we get a little bit more rain, how that holds up on the lower portion that we've done. Like I said, what we've seen is significant improvements. Guadalupe River Utility Crossing, this is a Water Development Board-funded grant, you know, 100% funding as part of the 2018, October 18 floods. The utility contractor has finally procured all the equipment and material necessary. They are working to get on site as we speak. The materials are being delivered. They hope to have this done by the end of the month, first, you know, first part of February.
But you're going to be like...
That's the ones that were being hung from the bridge?
Right, so are there going to be road closures and things associated with it?
No, so we already have that. This is actually tying everything in from what that original subcontractor did a few months ago. So this will finalize the project, connect everything, we activate it. The last one I have for you is the H Street well. Yeah, that contractor was awarded in December. We're shooting to have that, that's item 12, we're shooting to have that operational this spring. That was going to be the, you know, casing had the holes, we're going to replace that, get the pumps upgraded with new, get that back in before the summer with the pending drought conditions that exist. Last thing I wanted to do, if you have not seen across town, is give you a little update on Tex-Signals. 16 at G Street on the south side is one, 16 at Hill Country Drive is another. So they're working really, the 16 and 27 corridor are really heavy doing upgrades on all the signals. And then here at 27 in Clay and 27 in Quinlan, those are looking to be done with material lead times, I think they're shooting for March of this year. So that's just a quick update. If you have any specific questions on any other projects, just let me know.
EIC just approved the, well, we both approved the feasibility study for the Nimitz Lake part of the trail, correct? Do we have a...
We've got a future action on your agenda that will likely be given their action that they just took last night that will come before you, likely at your next council meeting.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, number two, the Community Development Block Grant Downtown Main Street Presentation. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So before we have our lovely Karen Blaney from Grant Works show you a presentation, I just wanted to go ahead and give you a downtown projects update of the two major projects going on downtown. So first is the Community Development Block Grant Program. It was awarded in 2021, and we are currently about to go out to bid for construction for this project. And it's funded through TDA and TERZ for our local match component. So just to reiterate what you have seen before, there's three major project areas. The first one is intersection improvements at the Earl Garrett and Water Streets. It's the signal improvements there. It's the pedestrian crosswalk improvements at Water and Clay. And then we are doing a tree well repair right there on 713 Water.
Megan, will that tree well repair be much like what they did in front of the art building or art...
Yes, on a lot smaller of a scale.
Okay.
So that one was a pretty large scale, and it had to do with a lot of bricks. And this one is focusing just right there, you can see those cones, it's just right there at that tree well. So they're just going to make that look better and safer.
Okay, that other project was wonderfully done. Very, very nice.
We owe that to our awesome streets department.
Yes.
So I did want to touch on this because it is in your consent agenda tonight, just to kind of explain. So the CDBG grant program, we were able to receive money because we are a Main Street designated city. So in order to maintain this designation, we have to go through annual contracts with the Texas Historical Commission. So that's what's going to come to you this evening, is just an annual contract renewal so that we may remain a Main Street city. So the Garage Streetscape and Utility Relocation Project is in partnership with K-Pub. As a reminder, this project is funded through a partnership with K-Pub for the utility work and through a funding agreement with EIC. So they approved an agreement not to exceed $400,000 for half of the utility relocation and the garage beautification portion. So the city is anticipating construction to begin in the late March to early April Just as a reminder, we are looking to add these beautification elements along the Water Street side of the parking garage as a way to provide low maintenance landscaping and other design elements that are complementary to City Hall. So K-Pub has finalized their design for their portion of the project. They're about to go out to bid and anticipate construction to begin early March 2023. So once they complete the area in front of the parking garage, we plan to move forward with the construction for the Streetscape improvements. And like I said previously, we expect this to begin late March, early April. And just to tie this all together, I just wanted to reiterate how these projects work together, and they tie in other city and community-supported initiatives such as the Heart of the Hills Heritage Center and the CUTS Clay South Concept Plan. Do you all have any questions?
Go back to the slide that we just had. So the overhead lights will go from where to where?
So right there at the vocal building, they're not going to actually attach to the building, they're going to be putting in poles right there in front of their building and doing the same thing on the clay side of the parking garage.
Okay.
And so it's not going to connect to the actual buildings, but they are going to be doing the street lighting that's similar in front of Pyton Plow.
Pyton Plow.
They're going to do that right there, but on poles instead of on the buildings themselves.
Standalone, remember that this was a concept that was diagrammatically shown as part of that CUTS Concept Plan several years back. And so in implementing the first phase of that on further up Clay Street between Napa and Pyton Plow, they found that the feasibility was easier to do a standalone pole-mounted type structure.
Is there any more discussion with CUTS about the actual crosswalk material improvements? I was, had that one conversation with Jeremy Walther about that.
Yeah, we continue to be in discussion with them about potential for artistic-type installations and how that could be done in the future. This piece, this funding through the CDBG piece will make the Tex-approved, you know, TMUCD-approved.
The PNO key.
Yeah, basically, but in the future, we could install those if we had private philanthropy to provide the funding for that.
All right. Any other questions for Megan? All right.
Okay, so you're welcome. Next, you're going to hear from Karen Blaney. She's the Community Development Regional Manager with Grant Works. So as a part of the CDBG grant award, a brief presentation is required on compliance with the Section 3 of the Housing and Urban Development Act of 1968. So there is no action that's going to result from this presentation. It's strictly informational per TDA and their CDBG grant program.
So before we get started, all these elements are elements that we have covered within our contracts, our construction contracts for these projects. Again, you have to remember, these grants go to a wide variance of cities. Many are much, much smaller than Kerrville unless professionalized, and so that's why they require these types of presentations.
Yeah, that's very well said, yeah.
Glad to have you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Mayor, Council, for having me. I'm Karen Blaney. Like I said, I'm the regional manager. My team of 12 covers west and south Texas. We have about 80 grants, almost 90, many of which are broken into several projects. But the, this TDA grant is on a two-year timeline, and with Mr. Hopps' efforts and Megan and Kyle, we are right on time. So very pleased about that. So thank you for indulging me in this presentation. So now we've been over this a couple of times already. The grant award is from Housing and Urban Development's Community Development Block Grant Program via the Texas Department of Agriculture. And the project is to install sidewalk, concrete curb, curb ramps, pedestrian signals, and traffic signals, and all appurtenances at the three locations that were illustrated in that last presentation. Funding source, Housing and Urban Development and Texas Department of Agriculture. So as a condition of funding, the city must comply with Section 3 of the Housing and Urban Development Act of 1968. What does that mean? That means to the greatest extent feasible. Feasible. Grant recipients must direct economic opportunities generated by these CDBG grants to low and very low-income persons. In part, this means, so the way that we do this is that make sure that Section 3 businesses have the information available to potentially submit a bid or proposal for the project, and that Section 3 workers have information about any available job opportunities related to the project. Often, these CDBG grants come in with most of workers already hired in the firms that are contracting with you for this project, but should any available job opportunities open up, there's ways to make Section 3 workers knowledgeable about them. And there's a reference to a CDBG policy issuance if anyone would want to know more about it. The companies may qualify as Section 3 business if it's owned by low-income persons, owned by Section 8 assisted housing residents, or 75% of their labor hours for the business are performed by Section 3 workers. If a company would think that they might qualify under one of those conditions, you can register at HUD Section 3 website. So this project is expected to include the following contracting opportunities. The grant administration, that's us, were already procured. The engineering services is Kim Lee Horn, they were also already selected. The prime contractor is the bid that Megan and Kyle mentioned. We are, we have already established the advertisement and solicitation steps that we need to take. Grant Works assists with this specifically. So all of that is going to be taken care of, and the city will have reached compliance with making the bid opportunity known, should anybody wish to bid on it. There is not a requirement for a bid actually to be received. It's only make it available, and by posting this divcast, which is the primary outlet, we got it covered. Now, individuals may qualify as a Section 3 worker if your annual income is below the county threshold for your family size, or if you're a current or recent youth build participant. Individuals should register themselves at workintexas.gov or the HUD Section 3 Opportunity Portal in order, in case they are seeking work, these opportunities can be pushed to them to receive. If, this is something that we pass on, for example, to the prime contractor. If they have work opportunities come available for this specific project, we tell them how to advertise that through Work in Texas and similar outreach efforts. So again, it's not a lot that the city actually has to do. This would actually come to the prime contractor via the contract that you have with them. Section 3 workers that reside near the project may also qualify as targeted Section 3 workers. This is a map that we made with TDA guidelines at the beginning of the project illustrating sort of the target area around the Main Street construction area. The city will track all hours worked on the project based on the three categories of workers, the targeted, general Section 3, and non-Section 3. This is require a collection of certain income information. This is another service that Grant Works provides. We are already tracking the labor via our labor compliance team. Once we have the prime contractor in place, we go over the requirements with them at the pre-con meeting, and then we start collecting the labor information. We do the hours for Section 3 workers at the same time. So again, we're providing this service to you.
Can you go back to the previous slide you just had up with the map? So when you say they could reside near the project, what's the radius around that project?
It's a mile, I think.
It's a mile? Okay, okay, that's good to know.
But I'll try to remember that and send it to Megan and Kyle, just to make sure. But I'm pretty sure it's a mile.
I was just curious about like how near it needs to be, whether it's something like within the boundary of the city, but I see you have that blue circle outlined, so it looks like it's that area.
Yeah, it's, they did a radius thing, not within city boundaries, which is, you know, okay.
Sure.
But yeah, they have a center it on the project itself.
I see that, the yellow dot. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, so those three categories, we're taking care of that. And this is the reference to the policy information, as well as my email if anybody would have any questions about any part of this. And that's it.
Thank you.
Is there a way to get a copy of this presentation?
Yeah, we have it.
You email it to me?
They have it in the back, and Megan and I have it.
Thank you.
Sure.
Now, this is the first time that, is this or is it not the first time that we have been under this type of grant? I don't remember hearing us talk about some of these things.
It's been a long period of time since the city has applied for a Community Development Block Grant Program. Again, we are not an entitlement city. Many cities, over certain population thresholds, receive a direct federal allocation that are CDBG funds. We have to go through a competitive grant process. And so Grant Works actually made us aware that we would be highly eligible for this grant based off of the period of time that we had not previously received it. And so that's why we moved forward with the grant application a number of years ago, as you recall. And so it's been, it's been quite some time since we've had to go through these specific regulatory pieces related to specific federal grants.
What about the population threshold?
I believe it's 50,000 plus, if I'm recalling correctly.
All right, good. Any questions, Council? All right, well, thank you for coming and appreciate the information. All right, we are ready for two C. And who is someone introducing this, or someone just need to come to the podium? This, I am looking forward to this.
Mayor Eichner, members of the Council, thank you very much for giving us an opportunity.
And tell us who you are. You didn't do that, John.
Pardon me?
Tell us who you are.
I'm John Anderson. I live in Kerrville, and I'm chairman of the Guadalupe River Center project. And again, I want to thank you all for giving us some time this afternoon to talk to you about the project. I'm speaking on behalf of our Board of Directors and our many volunteers and people beyond that who have been helpful in us bringing this thing together. I think one of whom is sitting over there, a Sea Scout leader from Bernie and Canyon Lake, who is the gentleman who, over the last several years, has on several occasions brought groups up to Nimitz Lake Sea Scouts to do some sailing up here. Our purpose in being here is to, one, brief you and inform you, and give you an opportunity to ask us questions. And our hope at the end of the day, and I don't mean this day, but at the end of the day, to get some expression of your support or endorsement for the project. I want to be specific, we're not asking for money. We are asking for some expression of support or interest to the project. The history of this project goes back to the day that in, I think it was in June of 2018, when the Kerrville 2050 Plan was, I think, unveiled for the public. It may have been late May, maybe early June. But I recall being in a room, and there were boards all over the wall about the plan. I had not been part of that planning process. My wife and I had been traveling out of the country a great deal at that time. But I was very, very impressed with what I saw with the content of the plan, as well as the process that had been used to bring it together. As I went through it, it was very clear that the centrality of the Guadalupe River, its past, its present, and its future as it relates to our community. And I was really struck by that, not only in the letter, but in the spirit of the whole document. And I also noticed scattered throughout the document were references to either goals or suggested actions that related to educating people about the river, its protection, preservation, its wise usage, including expanding recreation on the river, and I think reference to the Nimitz Lake area. I had, I'd had some experience in my life in boating and sailing and being around lakes and water, so I had looked at Nimitz Lake on several occasions, and with my brother-in-law, we had speculated about getting ourselves a couple of little laser sailboats to go out there and just fool around in the lake. But we wondered why there wasn't any activity beyond some limited kayaking and fishing boats. And we just couldn't understand it because it's such a beautiful, beautiful lake. Well, at that same meeting where I looked at the boards, Charlie McElvein was there, who at the time was president of the CVB. And I had known Charlie from where our paths crossed years and years ago. So I approached him, and I said, Charlie, I've been reading this thing, and I think there's some real opportunities to expand recreational boating, including probably some competitive boating on Nimitz Lake. And he said, that's great, I'm going to talk to some people and see if we can't get a meeting. Very quickly, he had organized a group to meet at Shriner University with Dr. McCormick and their team. And that began a series of conversations that went on for months, and it expanded outside of the university. Looking at the possibility, for example, of the university being involved in some kind of a club or boating activity on the lake. Discussions with Dr. Mark Faust at KSID about the same thing. Some discussions with area camps about their potential use. Discussions with Sean Sawyer over here and leaders of the Sea Scout group in the Alamo region. And what happened by, within about six months at the turn of the year, several important things happened. The McDonald Companies, as you know, gifted about an acre and a half of land at the landing property on Nimitz Lake to the city for city park. At about the same time, the city contracted with Kim Lee Horn for to do some concept studies about how you might use that property to further development of recreational boating and activity on the lake. Meanwhile, discussions had already started, and they were going on all over the place. And it was my understanding that I think that within the city, the studies done by Kim Lee Horn were going to be referred to parks and recreation to look for potential grant funds to get something started. And the kinds of concepts that they had recommended were somewhat similar to what you have at Kersh Shriner right now, where you have essentially a retaining wall or a sea wall and a ramp, and a place for a concessionaire, and you could have kayaks and stand-up paddleboards and so forth. It was, I would say, upgraded quite, quite a bit nicer and more attractive, but that was functionally what it would, what it would do. There was another, another scenario emerging, and that was one that would say, we ought to try to find a way to go beyond kayaks, stand-up paddleboards, and canoes, because the lake itself is capable of, as a venue, of having maybe 15 different types of watercraft for recreation, for sporting activity, for competitive activities, for festivals, and so forth. Things like dragon boats, which have become just a major festival attraction in this country and worldwide. So emerging are two different scenarios. The significance is that one scenario can be contained and done within the existing park. The other scenario requires higher land. The lake at the landing is about 1,621 feet, and the 100-year floodplain is, I think, 1,648 or something like that. So you've got to go up 25, 27 feet above the lake to find a place that you can safely keep all sorts of different watercraft, have some sort of a building where organized groups, Sea Scouts, Shriner, it could be anything, where groups, boating groups could organize, plan their activities to manage things on the lake. So they're going like that. The, we, we're beset with the pandemic. All of those conversations pretty much go on the shelf for a time. And with a couple of exceptions, I think that Sean and his people brought up a group in August of 2020, and with, did demonstrations to try to show people in the community, particularly young people, young boys and girls who could be candidates for sea scouting up to age 21, what it was like, and they might want to create a Sea Scout unit here in Kerrville. But apart from them achieving that objective, what it demonstrated is it validated our speculation that you really could sail on that lake. There were a lot of types of boating things that you could do, and there were some people that questioned that in the past. In fact, they had one boat that could carry six adults in it in bench seating. So again, we're otherwise, apart from that, we're pretty quiet because of the pandemic. We come around the corner, and in February of 2022, Sean, again, skipper Sean, brings up a group again. And what's interesting about it is in February, and they sail and they have a great time. And what that, what that did for us is expand our understanding of the seasonality or lack of seasonality for the lake. Whatever you might wish to do out there, you're no longer constrained to three or four months in the summer. It has significance in terms of the economics of a project. I think the Monday following their visit in February, I got an email from EA. He said, John, I saw on the lake some guys out there sailing again, and that's really neat, but we ought to talk. And so we had several conversations, and EA took the leadership to essentially say, look, here's the situation, right now, we don't see grant money anywhere, we'd like to see something done. Let's pull the people together that previously been interested in this, plus any others that you think could bring something to the table. Let's have a conference, let's talk about it, see if we can create a path forward. We met, EA gives us the facts of life about, we don't think there's any grant money out there at the state or the federal level, and right now, we don't have any loose change around the city. So if we're going to do anything, it's going to have to be done privately. And so how do you folks feel about it? The people at that table, and you know all of them, they're all community leaders, and they have demonstrated track records of, apart from their professional or business lives, of giving to this community. So they looked at it, and EA essentially challenged them, saying, if you want to do something, you guys are going to have to do it in your own. We talked about it, and it would require, among other things, the addition of another piece of property above the current Granger McDonald Park to get to higher ground for boats and a building. And at that... And at that point, Justin McDonald sitting at the table said, okay, I will provide a purchase option for you folks so that you can get the land above there, which is necessary for this project. Number one, I'll do that. Number two, other land along the river, and I think it's like another 1,800 feet or something on the landing property in the flood zone, below the Hundred Year Flood Line, that he would be willing to, we could talk about some sort of a lease or something with the city to make that property available to enhance the overall development of this thing. So the group decided, let's go ahead and try to do this. See if we can find some private donations to fund this. And we said to E A, we're going to need some money for some initial consulting and professional help to get this done. And he said, sorry, guys, which, again, we don't have the money. So Justin McDonald again said, well, let's pass the hat. And we passed the hat at the table, and we raised 18,000 to get started initially with our work. And I think it demonstrated something about the strength that the people at the table felt about the viability of this sort of thing. So we immediately went out of that room and went to work on developing our plan. I think that before I turn this over for the actual project briefing, I would like to ask you to pause and take an imaginary ride with me. And we're all going to get into a helicopter, good-sized helicopter. And we're going to go up to about 1,000 or 1,500 feet, and we're going to hover over Nimitz Lake. And we're going to look down at it and out at the horizon line. And looking down, what you're going to see, and you're all either generally or specifically familiar with the geography and the conditions. But you've got a lake that's 1.2 to 1.5 miles long, 200 to 300 yards wide, depth of 2 to 9 feet maybe, shallow areas, some snags in it in places, relatively undeveloped, or large parts of the lake are undeveloped. The banks go up, in some places it's relatively shallow rise, and others it's fairly steep. But the banks generally go up 25 or 30 feet above the lake. So that's what you're looking at. You know it's in a flood zone, you know it's subject to fairly high-velocity flash floods. We know that, we know that you can't put gasoline engines on there, which is a blessing for all the sorts of things we're talking about. I also, I'm in a helicopter with you, and I'm going to suggest that you take a look on the horizon. And you can look southeast, I guess it's generally southeast, towards San Antonio and northeast toward Austin. And what I will point out to you is that in that corridor of between Austin and San Antonio, you've got about 5 million people right now. And they're all an hour to an hour and a half drive from Nimitz Lake and Kerrville. So keep that in mind as we look forward in 2050 to the next 20-some years we have in the plan. So again, looking down at the lake, it has been referred to many times, I've read it and I've heard it, as a hidden gem. And I think it is. And the plan that Lain Guerrero is going to brief you on in a minute or two, the plan is designed to essentially take that hidden gem out of its hiding place and bring it up for this community, its residents, to see and enjoy and use. And that's what it's all about. And after Lain presents, we'll be happy to respond to any questions you have. Thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you. My name is Lain Guerrero, Vice Chair of the Upper Guadalupe River Center Foundation, and also the Capital Campaign Chair. And I'm here to sort of give you a quick version of the plan. And as John said, you know, we want something transformative. We all got together as a group, I guess before I start, I just want to thank John for his relentless persistence. He's been touting this story for a long time, and he's been very patient with all of us. We are all volunteers. You know, some of us, he said, we passed the hat. Some of us have gone beyond volunteers and tried to engage and make something presentable to move this forward. Each member of our team brings a different perspective and skill. We've got bankers, we've got a lawyer, a lot of business leaders, developer and architect, a life coach, open-water swim instructor, convention and bureau executives, and just really just good people. And they're all leaders, and they all care about the city. And when John brought us all together, you know, it was one of those, we're in the helicopter way up here, but in the reality is, you know, how do we get this helicopter landed on the ground? And that's what we're going to talk about today a little bit, which is the Capital Campaign and the nuts and bolts of what we're trying to do to transform that lake. We did set up a few committees. We're self-funded. We did receive donations initially, and in partnership with the Community Foundation, they helped us out to get us going. And then we did start a 501(c)(3), and we're currently waiting for our tax-exempt designation. The committees that we started initially are focused on getting the Capital Campaign together, getting the legal structure in place, and getting people's input as to what the functionality and purpose of this facility would be, and how would it become a reality. And there is a similar organization in Austin. If you're familiar with Town Lake, they have an organization called the Trail Foundation, which is now called the Trail Conservancy. And the Trail Conservancy is a 501(c)(3). And years and years ago, Austin had this similar problem. They had an appetite for a lot of projects with the Town Lake, but they didn't have the funds to give the lake. So they set up a private-public partnership. And there was an agreement between the city and the public partnership, and the private partnership, to kind of go through and say, well, this is what we're responsible for, and this is what the city's responsible for. And it's worked out well for them for decades. It's a very, it's a successful partnership. Whenever the city is trying to figure out what to do with the resource, they work with the foundation to set up priorities. And then, of course, when they need money to build a bridge or a playground or something like that, they lean on the foundation to do that. All right, so the first thing we're going to do, let's see. Here's our Board of Directors.
Lain, excuse me, why don't you, if they're here, why don't you introduce them?
Well, we have Charlie McElvein, John, Mandy Wendley. And she is on a committee right now. We haven't officially gotten her there yet. And then Judy, Julie Davis, she's here as well. We basically have a lot of different business leaders. And like I said, it's a diverse group of people. Like any project, if you don't have the right people, you're not going to, I mean, you can have an A idea, but you've got to have the A people to make it happen. And that's what John did so successfully, pulling these people together.
And these gentlemen over here, have been mentioned?
They are the Sea Scouts. And they were the ones that initially came in and sort of did a feasibility of the lake as it relates to what kind of boats would work on there. You know, is it something that could be developed into an event venue? Okay?
Thank you for being with us.
Thank you. So we got this smart group of people together, and we came up with a vision statement and a mission statement. And it's important that we did this. It's kind of one of those things you try to skip over a lot of times, and many people say, well, you know, we'll do that eventually. So we went ahead and did that initially, and that sort of drives a lot of what we're about to see today. So our first goal with the whole thing was to maximize the utilization of the lake. That's what's missing. So when you look at Nimitz, and I heard it from Julie once, and said, you know, there's just really no access to the lake. There's no way for people to get there. So to bring life to the lake, you've got to bring access. If you look at Flat Rock Park down there, you know, on a good summer day, you'll see there's about 500 feet of bulkhead. And then you'll see dozens and dozens, almost 100 people out there with boats just sitting around. It's because they have access. So even though you've got two boat ramps on the lake, that's not really access. Those are just boat ramps. So we focus on that. And so maximizing utilization is the number-one goal. And we tried to build the facility or come up with a transformative idea that would do that. The other concept that came in later, you know, we talked a little bit about sailing and the importance of the events and things like that. But we looked at a center up in Tulsa, Oklahoma, called The Gathering Place. Now, The Gathering Place is about a $400 million project. They have, I don't know how many acres it is, it's got to be several hundred acres. But they have a concept up there called, it's called The Williams Room. And it's basically a community living room. It's a space where people can go and have interviews and talk to people. Just, you know, a place for everyone to go and enjoy the river. And, you know, part of this facility has a coffee shop and a juice bar and all that. But most importantly, it's a place that I can imagine, I remember the chief saying, you know, if we can just get that recruit here to Kerrville, I've got them sold, you know? And so we want to be able to put our best foot forward and have something where you could do that interview, or you could have that meeting informally. And so I don't know how many meetings we had in the last six months over this project, but I wish all of them were at this, in a place like that, where we could overlook the river and enjoy, you know, the view and the river as we have that great resource here to show. The other part of it came out was that we really need to have daily and weekly camps for free. We want to have family days. We want to be able to make it accessible, because kids, not all kids can get that opportunity to go to a camp. My kids went to camp, but there are a lot of families out there that just don't have that opportunity. So, you know, the facility needs to be able to accommodate underprivileged children and be able to make it free for families to come in certain days during the month so that they can enjoy free kayak usage, free paddleboard, free whatever, and just hang out. Because it is a community center, and I think that's what's important to realize. The other thing that we talked about was river accessibility. We don't have a very easy way for people who are mobility-challenged to get into the river. So we could easily buy some docks and do that. And I've seen presentations from Ashley, where she actually did have these types of, this equipment. And it's important. So it's not just for, like, disabled veterans or people that need rehabilitation. It's going to be for seniors. It's going to be for people like me who don't like to get into a kayak. It's kind of sketchy. You're getting off the pier, and it's a wobbly thing. But they make these launches where the kayak is stable, and you get in there. Now, another level above that is a handicap accessible. And there's some imagery of that in this presentation. But, you know, it's important to realize that we're also a town that has a lot of rehabilitation. And a kayak is interesting. I kind of look at a kayak like a wheelchair on the water. So if you have no access, or you have no mobility with your legs, and you're a veteran or whoever you are, you know, it gives you that sense of freedom to get out there. But the problem is getting from the pier to the water. So it's important we address those. They're expensive, but they're certainly worth it. And I think provides some potential partnerships with some of the rehabilitation businesses we have in town, including Peterson Health. The other part was, you know, how can we create a center that has more integrated with the K I S D? And so, you know, there are a lot of kids that graduate from high school that they may not go to college. Maybe they want to be a hunting guide or a fishing guide, or maybe they want to just get a license or a certification on something. So we want to make sure that as far as, you know, captain's licenses, water treatment plant certifications, similar to the stuff like, you know, we're already doing great things with drones. You know, the kids are getting drone certifications. So let's expand that and try to come up with some certifications, maybe from Texas Parks and Wildlife, maybe the parks itself, you know, because this part of this facility is educational. So, you know, those are important. And then finally, whatever we do with this building, we've got to make sure that we work hand-in-hand with the U G R A and all the other organizations to make sure that, you know, we're going to expand the accessibility of the lake, but we don't want to hurt the lake, or we don't want to hurt the river. And we have made several presentations to Tara and her group, and they've pointed out a few things already that they would do differently. Their benefit of this project is if we could build it in a way, in a fashion, that showcases the best practices for building things on the river, that would give them something concrete to show developers around the hill country. This is how you do it right. This is water reclamation. This is how you do permeable park, permeable parking spaces. And this is how you, you know, filter the water and all those different things. So if you've been to the U G R A, they have a fantastic goat track, or whatever you call it, it's actually called Edgescape. So Edgescape is landscaping where you're telling a story. This is the native plant for this. This is how you do that. And they have a great representation of that out there. And then hopefully, we can sort of help partner with them to continue their mission, which is mainly education of watershed stewardship. All right. So here it is. So if you're looking at the map, look at my notes. The green square is, or the rectangle is the, that's what we're talking about today. That is the Granger McDonald Park, plus some additional land that's available above the flood plain. The yellow line is just a hand-drawn river trail. I just wanted to see how long all that was. So the 1,850 feet, one of the great things that happened during the last few months is that Justin, or Granger McDonald's, has offered to long-term lease their entire riverfront. So we're talking about the Granger McDonald Park, but then we're also talking about all the coastline between that park and the end of that 1,800 feet right there, which is their property. Now, the red property, the red line, that is a property owned by the Meyersteins. And they are not in a rush to sell that property. I will say that most of that land, probably 2/3 of it floods. And only 1/3 of it, up in the upper-left corner, is something you can develop, unless you wanted to move a lot of dirt in there, and that would cost several million dollars. So, but they are interested in selling that property. I have been talking with the broker involved in the deal, and everybody who's interested in the property is interested in working with you guys to figure something out for this river trail. So until that is sold, there's really nothing to say about it. It does, if you do get that piece of it, it's about 3/4 of a mile river trail. And then I would also suggest some boardwalk installation between there and the water treatment plant. Okay. Another reason we came here today is you've got the study that you're going to receive about the river trail. I want to make it clear, we are not dependent on the river trail getting to this development. It's important, it would be helpful, and there's some reasons you might want to do it. But that's not going to change the access. The access is really from the app all the way down to the, and then, of course, we'll have our own river trail and our own boardwalk area down there as well. But that's not a determining factor for the success of this project. All right, let's see here. All right. So let's look at like what we're going to build here on the south side. So this is the river center. This is the Guadalupe River Center, to be named. We are currently in a capital campaign. This center is designed with a lot of people's different input, but at the end of the day, the final say will be up to the largest donor. So we've done a pretty good job flushing out everything by form and function. I wanted to personally thank Peter Lewis for helping us with the design of this project. We did hire a couple of folks out of California to kind of get it started. But Peter donated his time and saved us from ourselves several times. This is a river center that is designed, it's got form and function. It's a culmination of input from everyone in our group, and there are even some ideas from other river centers around the country. This is not a This is not a unique project. They're happening everywhere. And I think Gil Salinas probably has mentioned it several times, but I think it's called quality of space. You know, there's a lot of cities out there that are looking to develop quality of space so they can attract more people. And, you know, these days, the kids in the twenties, they are, you know, they don't have the normal jobs like we used to. They actually work online, so they have more opportunities to live anywhere they want. And having that quality of space in our town will really help. Some of the comments I've heard from the Parks and Rec, Celeste over at the Parks and Rec Board, or used to be on that board, was that a big, a big donut hole we have is with the younger people coming here. We have a lot of older people, but we need, we need that 20 to 30 range. And a space like this is the type of attraction that gets people here. Now, there's other parts to it that are important to realize. You know, there's a rest, there's changing room and a restroom underneath it. I want you to pay attention to the way it's cantilevered over, over the grass. It's important because there's a lot of shade when you do that. It's also functional because, you know, the river floods. It's going to go right up to those columns. There's also to point out that, you know, the shade that's underneath that building, that's something that, you know, if you're setting up your kayaks or getting ready for the day, you're going to need that. There also could be sailing classes underneath there that are outdoor. So, that's important. On the left side, you want to see that that's not really a typical boat ramp. If you look at the size of the person walking down that sidewalk, that's an 80-foot wide lake access point. And I call it that because not just boats, but swimmers, triathletes, everybody, kayakers, paddleboarders, they're all coming out of that water. So, you want to have a really wide access. And then, of course, at the front, you'll see the boardwalk. That's also another form of access. So, access is the key. That's how you get more people in that water. The orange sticks on the left side, you'll see those. Everybody asks me, what are those? And those are flags. Flags are important. So, if you're having an event here, you might have, let's say, for instance, Peterson does a health event or something like that. You want to have that option to have some marketing, some flags that go up and down, and it kind of brings a little bit of life to the area. We've got the yardarm there with the flags, but flags are cool, and they are really helpful with marketing. And then, up at the top left, there's a little orange thing below the flag up there. You'll see that. That's a food truck. There's actually a designated space, and we'll show you how that works on the next slide, but there's a designated space for that food truck, which is obviously interchangeable. Again, we want to attract those younger, younger people to the, to the center, but we also want to make it kind of hip and cool, and that could be anything local, obviously. We have lots of food trucks that are, that are around. And then, in the middle, you'll see a lot of grass area. So, one of the things that I asked the architect to do is to put a bunch of chairs out there because I want to make sure that people know that this is for families. We want to have a free place for people to go out and enjoy the summer with their kids and just relax on the river. That's important. Behind that green space is a parking lot. And I can imagine, and I'm from Houston, so we've had things called keels and wheels and things like that, where you could have the car people, the car show people, they come in, they could come to the river there, they could lay out the cars on this next slide, and I'll show you that here. So, on the next slide, you'll see ample parking. There's probably 120 or 140 spaces there. And then, you've got the green grass there. This design is truly functional. So, one of the biggest events we have in this town, probably the second largest in Texas, is the triathlon. So, the triathlon, I did spend some time talking with Dan, who owns the event five, High Five, and, and he's really excited about this. The current triathlon, it always starts off with a swim. The current triathlon is across the river. That land is for sale. So, I don't know if you knew it or not, but it's questionable whether that triathlon, the person who purchases that land will still allow that to happen. So, when he saw this project, and I gave him a private presentation, he was very excited about it. He not only said it was exciting, he even suggested that we could probably get another two or three events out of that lake with him if we were to build this. This thing is built specific for his, for his needs. You know, I made guesses about it, but he, he's come in and he suggested we should look at the type of concrete we use when they come out of the water, we don't want to hurt their feet, and all these different things. There's a lot of little details about that. But basically, what it does is it gives that, that swimmer, that, we had 1,800 swimmers coming to this town, 5,000, with their families, 5,000 people. The impact of that triathlon, according to the city, was about a million four, million six, something like that, or a million, million five. And that was two, that was two years ago. The one last year was even bigger. And, and the triathlon we have is the second largest one in Texas, not far behind Austin. And the reason is, is because you've got these great roads for the bicycles, and we've got the cleanest water swim portion in the state. This is the best lake for swimming, for open water swimming. So, we have a lot of opportunity with that. We can take that success and take it further. There's no reason, you know, with this setup, we couldn't handle 3,000, maybe even more, maybe even up to 4,000 swimmers or triathletes on this, this program. Now, the programs that he said that we could add immediately are not as large as the current triathlon, but there's a lot of smaller type venues that he could help us with. He's also in charge with a lot of events on Town Lake. So, there's a lot of rowing, there's a lot of boats, dragon boats, kayak sprints, things like that. But he's been a true source, a true support for the, for the city's events. He's been amazing, and he's a great resource for us to keep using, and he's thrilled about this. He's on, he's one of our quotes here, saying how great it would be. So, that is that. So, the economic impact from the outdoor is good, but the indoor is actually just as good. The, the way we've designed this is we've kind of created an event center. I do not want to call this a community or a convention center. It's not a convention center. This is a river center. I did work with Emily Simpson, who owns Cartwheels here in town, and she worked with us to come up with a layout that would work best for a caterer, any caterer, not just her. She's amazing. But, you know, the way this thing is set up is it can hold about 100 people per room, so about 300 total. It's a lot of glass, it looks over the lake, it's real pretty. But again, each room can be separated, so that means that you could run lectures, just kind of like the Deirdre Center, we could have lectures, we could also have business expos, we could have a lot of things in this event center. And events are, the event part of the, of the pro forma is really what carries this thing. You know, we have several choices around town, but nothing quite like this available. And we believe that even before it's completed, it'll be booked up, probably a year in advance. I know currently with KPA, we've had to book up something a year in advance just for the Agbarn. So, so here we go. So, you got the rooms up there, those are the, there, you can separate them. There's a concourse in the middle, that's Peter Lewis's design. It's kind of similar to, I'd say, the Calo a little bit, but basically, you can serve each room individually if you want, but then also, there's this porch, and all the glass windows open up separately, which is kind of nice. Now, originally, we had a pergola, which is that round donut thing on the top. And after some thought and consideration, one of the board members said, look, you know, we need to go enclose that so that if somebody wanted to use the facility, we wanted to make sure the public had always had access to this, to this building to benefit from it. So, so we decided to enclose that and make it into a treehouse. So, it's a lot larger, and I'm about to show you kind of what that looks like. But this is, this is the similar concept that they have up in Tulsa at The Gathering Place. It's kind of a treehouse, but it's basically that community room, that living room for Carville, for people to have meetings and for people to just sit and enjoy the river and have fellowship. And that's, that's sort of where that design comes from. The, the idea behind the whole concept is that it's always available for people to use. And then, of course, if there's an event going on in the main building, then that would never preclude anybody from having, having access to that. All right? So, the community impact of this, this thing is, it's nice to have a nice building, and it's nice to have a great coffee bar and a juice bar and all those different things. But really, what we're looking for is, it's kind of like, if you build it, will they come? And I know, you know, with the Arcadia, you know, we built it, but then, you know, it was a little more work to get people to come. And that's, that's what we've decided here. We put a lot of emphasis on having staff to, to be there to set up events, to, to work with the teachers, and to, and to actually integrate with different places in the, in the community. So, STEM education's a big deal. You know, we, we want to have our curriculum kind of figured out at the, at the center so that people, so that KISD students, when they, if the teacher wanted to have their own field trip program, they could do that themselves, or we could do it for them. But we have an intense focus on education to make sure that the, the center is actually used to help give kids the opportunities to come out and, and do things related to biology or environmental sciences, or architecture, or sustainability. We want to try to make sure that our curriculum out here matches what the school's curriculum is to integrate better with, with the KISD. Again, also, we talked about certifications, that's also a big part of it. Sustainable river management classes. Shriner University is also looking at doing potentially some sort of sailing program. They just piloted one last semester, they got nine students to sign up, which was more than they expected. And what's interesting about that relationship is that if they could teach the students the sailing camp part, or that it's kind of a certification from US Sailing that gives the, the student the ability to, to teach sailing, kind of like a lifeguard certification. So, if that program continues, then we'll have a feeder of sailing counselors to come in and help us with camps during the summer. Potential partnerships, we talked about the Upper Guadalupe River Authority, Peterson Health, there's a lot of different rehabilitation partnerships that are available, Doyle Community Center. I would love nothing more than to have kids from neighborhoods that don't get the chance to go to camp to come out and have free camp here. YMCA, we talked about the Sea Scouts, they're also working with us as well. And then, of course, the events. So, on the events, we have the triathlons, a lot of economic impact with that, sailing regattas. I want to point out something interesting about this picture at the bottom right corner is what a boardwalk would look like. We talk about the river trail all the time, but a boardwalk is a much different thing. So, you can put a river trail next to a river, but if you really want to give access to the water, it's nice to have a little boardwalk, and they do that in Town Lake as well. Boardwalks are expensive, they're about seven times more expensive per foot than the, than the river trail. But the way they do them is they're made out of cement, they have socket, they socket it into the ground so that the flood comes, it goes over it, and it doesn't, it doesn't go away. So, that's something to think about. Cycling events, sculling, you know, one thing that comes up a lot is can you have sculling and rowboats out here? The lake is not quite long enough for an official rowboat or a sculling team. It requires a 2,000 meter run, and we have 2,000 meters, but we don't have any room for them to stop. So, we, we don't have enough for that. But there are shorter versions of that. There's a lot of different avenues with that. And then, obviously, holiday boat parades, outdoor concerts, you name it, we've got it all covered. And again, the success of something like this really relates to the personnel that you have hired to reach out and to book these, these people to come in. All right. So, again, this is the layout. I just wanted to point out just the ample space that there is for a ton of events out there. It's, it's, it's purpose designed, and it will work well with just about anything that we're doing. And hopefully, this will be sort of the center of the community, that's our, that's our hope. On the handicap side, this is, this is something that we're interested in figuring out, which is, you know, the piers. And you can't have piers on the water. If you have a solid pier, it's going to get washed away by the flood. So, these piers that we looked at are called EZ docks, and they have pylons that they rise up to six feet. Now, if the river goes up higher than six feet, then they come out of the pylons and they have a tether, so they kind of skate along the water if it's, if it's like that. They also have wheels underneath it, so we can actually pull them out and drag them off and above the floodplain to save them as well. Because these are expensive boating piers, and you don't want to have them washed down the river to Canyon Lake. All right. So, social and business events, you know, obviously, galas, that would be a pretty decent revenue source. We do have pricing in our, in your books, you have actual pro formas and things like that that are more detailed than what's in this presentation. But again, galas, weddings, and banquets carry the day as far as revenue. Expos and lectures, it's not quite a convention center, but it is something that's big enough that could be considered, like you could have a team building event with these dragon boats and, and then have a workshop with your company up in one of the classrooms and do it that way. All right. So, the cost of this thing is, is about $10 million. We are offering $6 million, the naming rights for the largest donation, which would be $6 million. To me, it seems like a lot of money, but it's actually not if you're going to put your name on it. It's not a hospital, it's not a nursing center, it's not anything like that, it's, it's a river center. But having your name on something like this is similar to like Zilker Park, or Louise Hayes, or Shriner University. So, we feel that there's a lot of value with that. And then, we also have a $3 million option for the naming of the classrooms. We have three different classrooms, and that's, that's one of the options. And of course, the Marina Complex down at the bottom, that's also an option, and then down, down, down the line there. So, the total amount that we're looking to raise for the capital campaign is about 13 and a half million. The cost is about $10 million, and that covers everything from boats to piers to land, a building, and a year's worth of operating expenses. So, it was, it was a little more than I wanted to put down, but we have two bankers on our board, so I did not get away with that. But that's, that's basically the, the whole thing. And so, why we're here is that we're looking for support. We would like to see if we could get a resolution or some kind of expression of support from the city council. And that would help us with our capital campaign, because it's one thing to say, we've had a lot of meetings with, with EA, and we've had meetings with different people, but it would be nice to have some sort of formalized support, because if somebody's going to write us a check for this, I think they'd like to know that, that y'all are on board with
EA, or EA, Lang, I see where it says on the capital campaign summary that you've got a deadline really of August 31st.
So, the way it works is we will receive the commitments and put it into escrow, and then the escrow agent will release the funds back if we don't reach our $10 million goal by August 31st. If they did put the money in, they receive the money back plus interest, so there's no risks on their part.
Is that a hard and fast date?
That is a good date. We need to get going. Now, we have had a couple meetings already, so this isn't the first. I think we loosely started this campaign maybe about two months ago. So, this is really where it hits. This is where we're starting. And I've got a lot of great people on the board, everybody is so helpful. There's a lot of support there. Rachel Johnston's helping me as well, Charlie McElvein, Grega Pele, Kat McCann.
Are you looking at a management company to oversee the day-to-day activities, kind of like what the county does with the Agbarn, and they've got the And they've got this company, and does the foundation pay for that?
The foundation will actually run this thing.
Okay.
So there's a list of employees in the pro forma that show, I think one is the facility manager, very well paid. We didn't skimp on that. The events coordinator, barista, and then a sailing instructor. And then a lot of the work in the summer is contract. So, summer jobs for Shriner students.
If you were successful and you raised the money in time, do you have a timeframe that it would take to put this all together?
So I worked with J.K. Bernhard on the pricing and the estimates. And the estimate from James over there was between 15 and 24 months. So everything was priced December 31st this year. So I said, "If I gave you the request at the end of the year, I need that price." And that's where these prices are. So sooner we start, the cheaper it gets.
This is outstanding, Lang.
Thanks.
I just think it's outstanding. And just thank you to the committee for you guys. And the other thing I'm just, I am just overwhelmed and so pleased with is you guys put your money where your mouths were. So that's just, you believe in this. And that is, thank you, thank you, thank you. So, counsel, any comments here? Any thoughts? Any other questions? Kim?
I would be pleased to be part of a resolution to support this project.
I as well.
Brenda? Okay. Roman?
It's an interesting and exciting concept, something that, you kind of mentioned something about the younger people, young adults. Being someone who has lived in this community for almost all my life, yes, I completely agree. So, it's got a lot of information, a lot to digest, but thank you for all y'all's time and effort in putting this together, and I look forward to considering this further. Thank you.
Joe?
I think the polls had barely closed, and I got a message from John Anderson about this project. One day he came with a packet. That was the first, that was the first thing I received from a citizen. Mindy Wendley may have some memory about being involved in those little dinky boat ramps, because she and I were on council when those were built. And we sure did tease the mayor about those boat ramps.
Oh, the boat ramps.
Yeah, give us a resolution while I spoke.
Okay.
Yeah, is that probably the best way for us to go, was be a resolution?
Yes, I believe so. I think that's what we've talked about, and I think that gives this nonprofit group the support that they need to be able to present that to potential philanthropic donors. And it just shows that we're working in partnership together towards a common vision.
Is there anything else in the future that you can foresee that you'll probably need? I mean, I know as we go down the development road, that's, you know, a different approval process, but just in terms of asks from the cities, is there anything else that you're thinking you may come?
I think you're about to receive a report on this River Trail question. And I think knowing about this, you'll be more informed about what to do. The question might be, you know, if we connect the trail to the river center and that gets funded, how does that affect the triathlon and how that all works? Because you'll have access all the way back to downtown from the water park. So that would be the only consideration. As far as anything other than the River Trail, we don't really have any requests.
This is the biggest thing you need from us, really, is what you're seeking.
I would seek your support on this resolution, Roman.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and don't you miss the bowling alley? There's not a lot of do around here.
Bowling alley keeps coming up. Can you find room for that?
Well, you know, honestly, if we can get this built, I think Julie and her team and
Uh-oh.
And
Julie, he's putting you on the spot now.
Julie and Todd. Todd Bach was, he said something really profoundly, and I know y'all have heard it 100 times, but this, the town and the businesses have literally turned their back on the river. And it's time to embrace it and invest the resources and time that's required to get the most out of it. And I think with a big group of people like we've got assembled, thanks to John, I don't know, I think we've got a good chance to get this done.
Yeah, yeah.
And we have such a wonderful resource sitting there and isn't going to hurt the environment. I just so appreciate, of course.
Tara won't let that happen.
Yeah. And so I just, this is just awesome.
Are you at liberty to divulge any donations you've received so far?
We have, we have nothing in escrow. So we have interest all over the place, but we have nothing in escrow. And so my hope is that somebody's going to put their name on this. It'll be a gift to the city. It'll be a gift to the Hill Country. It's something that is very, it'll be a high, highly-trafficked, highly-used facility. Like I said, like a Zilker Park, or a Calo, or something. So I'm hoping somebody has an interest in the education piece, the environmental piece, or the, just the events, or just plain helping the city. That's what I'm hoping. So we're looking for that person right now.
Well, you've got all the right players.
Thanks.
This is wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. Thank you, thank you all.
Yeah, thank you. This is great.
Okay, so do we need a motion on a resolution and present it at the next council meeting?
I'd like a general consensus on that. We'll have it on one of your upcoming meeting agendas, likely the 24th of January.
24th. All right. Any council member have any problem with this?
No, full support.
If you do, I'll bump you over the head. So, this is great. All right, that'll be great. We've got consensus, and that will be super. Yes. Thank you all. Just wonderful. I think you need a round of applause. That's been super. All right. Great way to start the new year.
Get us money.
No, I'm just kidding.
Yes.
All right. Okay, at this time, I think, do we have a Judge McGuire in the house?
He is on his way in.
All right, very good. Well, we'll just take a short recess till he gets here, and so we'll recess at 5:17. Let's be back 5:30, and he should be here by then. We'll do a presentation, and then we have a little bit of a reception. Well, call the meeting back to order. Our guest of honor has arrived at 5:49. And Judge, if you and your family will join us up front, please? Just go right to the middle. All right, let me start with this. I hope you didn't break any speed limits all the way back.
Won't say anything.
All right, all right. City of Kerrville proclamation. Whereas, the city of Kerrville is made so much better by the efforts of devoted professionals who are dedicated to improving the quality of life of this community and to protecting individuals, families, and children. And whereas, Judge M. Patrick McGuire was appointed as municipal court judge for the city of Kerrville in 2003 and served the city in this position for more than 19 years, all the while exhibiting exemplary performance, dedication, and commitment to the city and the public. And whereas, Judge McGuire presided over the city's municipal court, which has general jurisdiction over Class C misdemeanor cases, code enforcement, and at times juvenile issues. And whereas, Judge McGuire's duties included presiding over criminal trials, enforcing court orders, issuing search warrants and arrest warrants, and providing other duties as a state magistrate at the Kerr County Jail. And whereas, Judge McGuire is a past president of the Kerr County Bar Association and has served the community in several other ways, including as a member of the Rotary Club of Kerrville, member of the Kerrville First United Methodist Church, and former Cub Scout den leader. You guys were probably a part of that, right? And whereas, the city of Kerrville is grateful to Judge McGuire for his dedication and commitment to the residents of the city, for his strong sense of justice, fairness, and respect for all parties in the courtroom, and as a leading lawyer who has distinguished himself at all levels of legal justice, and as a person committed to the overall welfare, safety, and security for the city, where he has distinguished himself as a legal representative for over 19 years. Now therefore, I, Judy Eichner, mayor of the city of Kerrville, Texas, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, today, January 10, 2023, as a day of celebration honoring Judge M. McGuire, Judge M. Patrick McGuire, and his service to the city of Kerrville, Texas. In Kerrville, Texas, and we encourage all citizens to join in celebrating the service and professionalism of George, of Judge M. Patrick McGuire. And I have signed this. And I just want to say thank you. We never, we always heard such good things about the way you treated the people that came before you in municipal court. And we just really, really appreciate that.
Well, thank you, thank you very much. And to say I'm honored doesn't even begin to describe what's happening here today. You know, I've been practicing law for 25 years, and I can say without a doubt that the last 19 years as a municipal judge has been one of the highlights of my career. It's been extremely rewarding. It's been made a whole lot better by the folks seated along that back wall there. We have the best staff that we could ask for. I'm going to miss working with all these guys and seeing them every week. But thank you all so very much. This is, I'm truly humbled. Thank you.
Well, and we wish you the best of luck as you move on and upward and onward here.
We'll see each other around town.
That's right. Would you introduce your family?
Yes, this is my wife, Tara. This is my daughter, Kate. She is a freshman at Texas A&amp;M. This is my oldest son, Brady. He's a junior at Texas A&amp;M. And that's my youngest, Jack. He is a junior at Tybee High School.
Ready for Texas A&amp;M? Very good, very good. All right. Well, I have one other thing that I want to present to you. This is for your desk, and it's a plaque, "City of Kerrville, presented to M. Patrick McGuire. Thank you for 19 years of outstanding service and dedication to the city of Kerrville, December 2022."
Thank you so much.
Now, we have one last thing for you. It's a Kerrville Kindness Cup, but there's a little bit of candy in there in case you need to sweeten somebody else.
Thank you all so much, and I'm going to miss working with the staff, but I know y'all are going to be in good hands with Judge Pearson moving forwards. Thank you.
My, anything you want to say?
Yeah, you know, when Judge McGuire came, he was one of the first people I met, certainly attorneys I met when I came here. And then we got in kind of a bind. We had a court that was in need of an extra judge, and he just kind of transcended right over. And just really, I always thought he was so fair and so complimentary of staff and just so easy to work with. And I think Kerr County is very fortunate in the way that people like him step up into other roles, and he's going to the bigger leagues for sure. And I hope to see him again, just not before him. And I'll miss, I'll miss seeing him around. But we know where he is, and he's going to provide great service for Kerr County.
Thank you.
That's great. EA, did you want to say anything?
Thank you for your service. Thank you. Much appreciated.
And is there anyone else who would like to say something? All right, just thank you, thank you. And if you'll turn around and shake the hands of the council, please? Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thanks so much.
All right, we need a couple of pictures before we do some refreshments. And, so, family, you want to take that out, probably? There we go.
You guys want to spread out?
Somebody on either side? There we go. All right.
Want to bring staff up?
Oh, okay. Staff, anybody want to say anything? Thank you. All right. Okay. One shirt. All right, nice to see you again.
She was re, re
All right, get the staff.
She was on like two years ago. This was with Chris Stowe.
Yeah.
Kind of just squeeze them all in.
You want me over here? You got it. I know.
Yeah, now you get used to it. Just exactly.
He stabbed you. Come on, boy.
I couldn't, I couldn't. I couldn't.
All right, what we're going to do, we have refreshments out here, so let's take 15 minutes, and we'll start the council at 6:15. Perfect, that was fine. Somebody hit the gavel there and just recesses. Thank you. All right, very good.